A quorum of 25 people, voters being present, the special town meeting called to order. I want to take a moment to thank all of you for being here tonight. This is the second town meeting we've held in the middle of a global pandemic and like the first one in June, my goal leading up to tonight was to make it as safe from a public health perspective as possible. With the help of an awful lot of people, I hope we've done that. I also want to give a special shout out to the students you see walking around, seeing the votes. I told this at least twice to them, that especially tonight, there's no way they could have done this without them, so I would probably thank them for being here tonight and helping out. Tonight's proceedings will be similar to those of the June, some differences from a normal town meeting. I've eliminated most routine preliminaries that start out with each town meeting, again, I'm sure you'll be thrilled with that. My vote this evening is to clear our business as quickly as possible, while we're not really discussing this instead. With our bestest proceeding, folks sort of listen to the same kind of contact tracing if necessary. That's why you receive specific seats, I ask you remain in the seats that you're in and not move to a different seat for a better location. Everyone has the best seat in the house. Also, masks must be worn over your nose and mouth at all times throughout the building, except when it comes to the microphone. You may remove your mask if you have a microphone. There will be volunteers to wipe off the microphone with the appropriate solution that is affecting that booth's speaker. Also, when you come up to the chair of the table, please don't touch the microphone to the stands. The volunteer there will be happy to adjust the microphone if you might. When we do clear our business seating, I'm going to ask everyone to remain in their seats so they direct and orderly and socially exist next to the gym. And unlike typically, when people will come and maybe talk to their friends on the way out, I'd ask them to leave the building if you can find your cars and maybe go home as safely as possible. While I've eliminated most of my typical introductory comments, I do want to remind everyone, all of our normal will still apply. The town meeting is not a comment section or a word selection, sorry, a select board meeting or a school meeting. Nor is it a color forum or a color period. The town meeting can only take action within the scope of the article on the posted warrant. Similarly, any discussions are also limited to the scope of the articles on the posted The moderator's motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They have the same standard of motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderator's motions one, two, three, and four as printed in the handbook? Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your cards. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Onto our business for tonight. And my first apology is that we're having some technical difficulties with the laptop, so we won't be able to project the warrant up on the screen immediately. We will get to that. If we haven't resolved this problem by Article Six, we might find ourselves taking a short recess, so we can wait until the technical difficulties are solved. Article One, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash a sum of money to be placed in the stabilization fund, OPEB stabilization fund, special education, special purpose stabilization account, capital account, capital stabilization account, and/or FY21 budgetary line items as proposed, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to transfer from free cash to a sum of $1,234,004 to the general stabilization fund, a sum of $305,667 to the OPEB trust fund, and a sum of $517,003 to the capital account. Mr. Herbert.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for being here. As the moderator said, this is a routine article that we do every fall. It's the appropriation of our certified free cash. Free cash, for those of you that have heard me say this before, is not free and it's not cash, it's simply the balance at the end of the year after the revenue and the expenditures have been balanced out. So this year, we ended up with a free cash balance of $2,056,674, primarily driven by term backs from departments because we ended up putting a spending freeze on when the COVID pandemic hit, and we were able to cover a lot of expenses through CARES Act funds, that's federal money. We're looking at appropriating this in accordance with our financial policies, which states that 60% of our free cash number will go towards our general rainy day stabilization fund, at least 10% goes towards our OPEB stabilization fund, and at least 15% goes to capital. This year, that ends up being $1,234,000 into our general stabilization fund, $305,667 into our OPEB trust, and $517,000 into our capital, most of which was deferred from the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash the following, a sum of $1,234,004 to the general stabilization fund, a sum of $305,667 to the OPEB trust fund, and a sum of $517,003 to the capital account. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Two, adjust fiscal year 2021 budget, sponsored by the town manager and the finance director. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the treasury a sum of money to be added to or to make adjustments to Article Two of the June 2020 annual town meeting fiscal year 2021 budget, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to add to or make adjustments to Article Two of the June 2020 annual town meeting as outlined in the table included in the warrant book. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. When we did the budget for the second time around, this for FY21, that was back in May of 2020, we were trying to address the COVID pandemic and had ended up making adjustments of a reduction of $1 million in the school municipal departments, as well as taking 1.4 million from our free cash, or excuse me, our stabilization fund to help balance that budget. We did that based on the messaging that we were getting from the state, which forecasted a severe reduction in state aid, as well as a reduction in new growth due to the lack of building that had been happening in town, and that was conscientious lack of building, I should say. Over the summer, we were fortunate to know that thanks to the efforts of Senator Spilka and Representative Lewis and their colleagues in the legislature, we actually were level funded for state aid, actually a little bit more than what we had anticipated, and actually saw almost $400,000 in new growth over and above what we had anticipated. Typically, according to our free cash and our revenue policies, we take that entire amount, which equated to almost 1.4 million, and we divide it, 70% goes to the school department, 30% goes to the municipal departments. This time, because we did take money out of the stabilization fund to help balance, what we did is we took the increase in state aid, we appropriated that to the school and municipal departments based on that policy, and also took $400,000 and put that back into our stabilization fund. So the result of that means that we put 1.6 million into our stabilization fund, which is actually $200,000 more than what we took out. So we want to express my appreciation to the school committee, FinCom, and the Select Board, as well as Superintendent Adams, for willing to work with this and make the adjustments as necessary.
To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town votes to add or to make adjustments to Article Two of the June 2020 annual town meeting as outlined in the table in your warrant books. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move to an immediate vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Three, property tax exemption sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2), to be effective for any exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 2020, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends that property tax exemption percentage be set at 11.25% as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This again is another routine article, and frankly, one of the main reasons why we are having a town meeting in December. This actually provides property tax relief for qualifying seniors who meet certain income thresholds and age thresholds. What we have tried to done each year is to increase what's known as the property tax exemption, 41(c)(1/2) property tax exemption, which reduces their taxes. Last year, it was a $674 reduction. This year, we have budgeted for an increase that to 805. The way we do it here is a little bit different than other communities. We do something called 41(c)(1/2), which is different than 41(c). I won't get into all the details, but basically, we utilize a percentage and back into a number. So the percentage this year that's actually being voted on is 11.25. This was recommended by the Board of Assessors on November 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Mike said about, he mentioned that this article is one of the reasons we're here tonight. There's been a lot of discussion of why do we have to have this town meeting? And I'm not going to get into all the back and forth. The simple fact is, this article, the two after it, involve property tax exemptions or work offs for seniors and veterans in the community. If this town meeting did not happen by...
Friday.
By Friday, this would not be available, and seniors and veterans would not be able to get these tax exemptions and work offs until next year. So that, while everything we're talking about tonight is important, and the budget articles were important, this is the primary reason. People in this community talk about helping those who need some help, seniors who are on limited income. If we had not had this town meeting by Friday of this week, that would not be possible for this year. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2), to 11.25% to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Do I have such a motion? Is there? Thank you. Discussion? No, okay. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Four, could you please silent your phones, folks? I forgot to silent mine, so let me do that right now. Article Four, Brave Act, Real Estate Tax Exemption for Surviving Parents or Guardians of Certain Soldiers, Sailors, Members of the National Guard, and Veterans, sponsored by the Select Board, Board of Assessors, and Town Manager. To see if the town will vote to accept Clause 22h of Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, to exempt from taxation certain real property of and occupied by parents or guardians of military personnel who were killed in action or injured in action that subsequently caused their death, or military personnel missing in action presumed dead, subject to residency requirements, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to accept the provisions of Clause 22h of Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, establishing property tax exemptions for certain relatives and survivors of military personnel residing in Ashland, Massachusetts. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article and the next one actually provides tax relief for veterans under what was known as the Brave Act, which was passed in 2018 by the legislature. The first one provides a full tax exemption for families who have lost loved ones killed in the line of service or through injuries that they received through the line of service. Again, it provides a full exemption amount. Certainly something that we can do, the least we can do, I think, for those who have suffered and killed, or were killed in the line of duty. Right now, we currently have one family that would be able to take advantage of this and would be eligible for this. Certainly, I think the financial impact is minimal compared to the moral and human impact it would provide. Thank you.
To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept Clause 22h of Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5, to exempt from taxation certain real property of and occupied by parents or guardians of military personnel who were killed in action or injured in action that subsequently caused their death, or military personnel missing in action and presumed dead, subject to residency requirements, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Article Five, Brave Act, Reduction of Property Tax Obligation of Veterans in Exchange for Volunteer Services, sponsored by the Select Board, Board of Assessors, and Town Manager. See if the town will vote to accept Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5N, regarding a program for reduction in property tax obligations to allow veterans or spouses of a veteran in the case where the veteran is deceased or has a service connected disability, in exchange for volunteer services, up to $1,500 in tax reduction, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to accept the provisions of Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5N. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this is an article that comes through the Brave Act, a little bit different from the previous one. It provides a veterans' work off program for disabled veterans or spouses of deceased veterans that allows them to work off up to $1,500 of their property tax. We have a very similar program, actually, most communities do, for our senior citizens. It provides a lot of benefit for those senior citizens as well as the town because they provide necessary services. The town does have the ability to provide a cap on the number of people. I don't think that would necessarily apply here because in our survey of surrounding communities or other communities that have accepted this, the maximum number of participants is 15, certainly something that we can handle within our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion, the town accept Master General Law Chapter 59, Section 5N, regarding a program for reduction in property tax obligations to allow veterans or spouses of a veteran in the case where the veteran is deceased or has a service connected disability, in exchange for volunteer services, up to $1,500 in tax reduction, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. Do I have such a motion? Second? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on this. Also requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. And opposed. We do have our technology problem solved, so there will be no need for a recess, short or otherwise. Article Six, Land Taking by Eminent Domain, 12 to 16 Union Street, sponsored by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to purchase, take, or otherwise acquire, those certain parts of land in Ashland located on East Union Street and West Union Street, shown as Lot B and Lot C on a piece of plan of land entitled, "Planned Registered Land, 1 East Union Street and 12 to 16 Union Street, Middlesex County, Ashland, Massachusetts, filed with the Middlesex South Registry District of the Land Corps on February 24, 2020, and stamped 14371E, and also in Book 2020 Plan 444, recorded on July 9, 2020, a Middlesex South Registry of Deeds, including 3.82 acres as shown as Lot B on said plan, and 8.55 acres as shown as Lot C on said plan, both on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into and negotiate all agreements necessary to effectuate same, and to pay for and fund said acquisition or taking, along with all associated legal engineering costs required to effectuate said taking, acquisition, or purchase, the town transfer sufficient funds from the capital stabilization account to the capital account 01930-58000, and take any other action relative thereto. The finance committee recommends the town vote to authorize the Select Board to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to transfer $500,000 from the capital stabilization account to the capital account to enter into and negotiate all agreements necessary to effectuate same, and to pay for any fund and fund said acquisition or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs required to effectuate said taking, acquisition, or purchase, land located in Ashland as described in this article. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll start this off by... I'll start this off by saying eminent domain takings are something that we do not take lightly here, and usually look at these as either friendly, meaning they're negotiated or brokered, or again, something as a means of last resort. I will try to give you the Reader's Digest version of how we got here, which of course, you know, for me is probably not going to be very brief, but I will try. In twenty seventeen, Howard Fafford came to my office and expressed that he would like to donate a piece of property to the town for the purposes of a public safety building. Obviously, we were very thrilled with his benevolence. He expressed great appreciation for the town of Ashland and what it had done for him and wanted to give back. So we began a series of discussions over the course of a year that ultimately led to an almost four acre parcel being gifted to the town. That was codified in a gift agreement that was signed by Howard Fafford himself in June of twenty eighteen and was also accepted, voted on, and signed by the Board of Selectmen at their June sixth, twenty eighteen, meeting. From that point, that moved forward to the November twenty eighteen special town meeting, where our town meeting actually accepted the gift of eleven-plus acres, again with our thanks to Mr. Fafford and his company. That began the process of a lot of engineering, a lot of discussion, and really centered around, first of all, we needed to basically create the gift parcel. So the parcel in question was actually three parcels, which were in turn consolidated into one, and then carved off the gift parcel as part of an A and R process, which was subsequently, subsequently, ah, subsequently reported or recorded in a registered land court. From that point forward, when we started working on a deed, a transference of the deed, there were a couple of things that we needed to go through in terms of the deed and satisfy as part of the gift agreement. The main thing consisted of an easement and a location of the easement on the property that we could, that Fafford could then use to access the back of the property. So we went back and forth several times over the course of months to try to figure out where that easement would be located. There were a couple of other discussions that happened in between there. I know Selectman Mignani had worked really, really hard with Mr. and Mrs. Fafford personally to try to get some additional land in the back that would be helpful for our project, and almost got there. Ultimately, it was unsuccessful. Unfortunately, right now, we find ourselves in a place where we have gone through the process of permitting. We've expended funds on permitting based on the reliance of this gift agreement, this signed gift agreement, again, that was accepted at town meeting, and we keep getting close to getting a deed signed that would transfer the property, but unfortunately, it has not happened. So that leads us to this process of looking at an eminent domain taking. And before I start getting into any of the discussion about that, I just want to say this is one of those unique circumstances that only happens in municipalities, probably only happens in municipalities with open town meeting, where you have to have a direct discussion and an open discussion about something that could potentially harm you in litigation afterwards. So I want to be just very cognizant of what we talk about and what we, what we discuss tonight, while understanding that we need to have an open and honest and transparent discussion about the facts at hand. We have gone through an appraisal process, so we have identified several parts of the property that, in addition to the gift parcel, that could be beneficial to the town. Right now, what we are looking at taking through the eminent domain process is the gift parcel itself, as well as potentially the rights to an easement that go to the back of the property. That's it right now. And so in support of that, we are looking for a transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund to help support that, which according to our appraisal would be more than enough to cover the funds necessary for that taking. Again, I just want to reiterate that we're still open to working with Fafford to try to effectuate this, this, this transfer amicably, but unfortunately, we've just run out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the Select Board is authorized to purchase, take, or otherwise acquire those certain parcels of land in Ashland, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, located on East Union Street and West Union Street, shown as Lot B and Lot C on a plan of land entitled, "Planned Registered Land, One East Union Street and Twelve-Dash-Sixteen Union Street, Route one thirty-five, Middlesex County, Ashland, Mass., date December five, two thousand and nineteen, Gary and Howland, Inc., sorry, I'm sure I butchered that, engineering and land surveying, filed with the Middlesex South Registry District of the Land Corps on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and stamped one-four-three-seven-one-E, and also in Book twenty-twenty, Plan four-four-four, recorded on July ninth, twenty twenty, a Middlesex South Registry of Deeds, including three point eight-two acres as shown as Lot B on said plan, and eight point five-five acres as shown on Lot C on said plan, both on file with the town clerk, and authorize the Select Board to enter into and negotiate all agreements necessary to effectuate same, and to pay for and fund said acquisition or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs required to effectuate said taking, acquisition, or purchase, that the town transfer five hundred thousand dollars from the capital stabilization account to capital account zero-one-nine-three-zero-dash-five-eight-zero-zero-zero, the acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for the public safety and general municipal purchases under the care and custody and control of the Select Board. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Before we get to a discussion, I was contacted earlier today by a representative of Mr. Fafford, asking if the representative could make a brief statement this evening. As I've done in the past, I willingly allow that to happen, so his attorney will make a brief statement. I just want to be clear that there will be no discussion around this statement or questions to the representative after that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't know if everybody can hear me. My name is Angela Conforti. I am an attorney, and I represent Howard and Madeline Fafford, being the owners of the subject property. I'm here to make a statement on Mr. Fafford's behalf specifically regarding some disparaging statements made by town officials about Howard Fafford in the public forum, including statements that the town has honored all of their obligations under the two-hundred, the two thousand and eighteen gift agreement, and it is Mr. Fafford alone who has been uncooperative to deliver the deed to the property. When Town Manager Michael Herbert was asked at a Conservation Commission meeting in October, what was holding up Mr. Fafford from delivering the deed, he responded that he did not know. Over the past several months, Mr. Herbert has been made well aware by Mr. Fafford's attorneys and by Madeline Fafford herself, that as part of the gift agreement, the town has had an additional obligation that they failed to mention in the public sphere, I guess, until tonight. In order for Mr. Fafford to use and develop the remainder of his Union Street land, he specifically included in the gift agreement a provision requiring the town to grant Mr. Fafford an easement for access over the public safety facility property to his remaining land behind and beside the gift parcel. The breakdown in communication and standstill that Mr. Herbert and Joe Magnani referred to in a recent Metro West Daily News article are patently untrue. Mr. Fafford's attorneys have been responsive and in regular communication with Town Council. The only standstill and communication occurred between February and June of this year. In February, Mr. Fafford's attorney relayed proposed provisions to the draft deed to Town Council, who did not respond until prompted again in late June with an offer for Mr. Fafford to execute the version of the deed negotiated in February if Town Council were in agreement with the latest draft deed. At that time, Mr. Fafford's attorneys learned that during the town's radio silence, the town completed its engineering of the public safety facility and unilaterally chose the location for Mr. Fafford's easement. In a different location than Mr. Fafford had proposed on a plan that his engineers sent to the town in the spring of twenty nineteen. The town went forward with engineering the public safety facility without including Mr. Fafford in the design process or providing him the opportunity for input on an easement location that would be acceptable for him. Instead, the town chose the easement location along the eastern property line in a location that would require Mr. Fafford to incur significant costs in earth removal and installation of retaining walls, not to mention the possibility that the easement would not even be permissible by the Conservation Commission, as a portion of the town's proposed easement was located within a twenty-five-foot wetland no disturb zone. Once the town had finalized their plans for the public safety facility and began demanding delivery of the deed from Mr. Fafford, he and his engineers began the process of exploring other options for an easement that are practical for the use of his land. Mr. Fafford is still working through these issues with the facility details and proposed easement that the town laid in his lap, and the town has since proceeded to treat Mr. and Mrs. Fafford as adversaries, rather than treating them as the helpful and supportive members of the community that they have been for over forty years. Mr. and Mrs. Fafford are shocked and saddened that the town would darken their reputation for generosity, which they have proven over the years through various other gifts to the town, including the driveway to the Fruit Street School, a land donation and partial construction of the existing fire station on Cedar Street, a sewer line from Fafford's condominium development off Pond Street to the Framingham Town Line, and a cost savings to the town of over two million dollars. For this sewer project, the town and Fafford entered into an agreement in nineteen ninety-seven, where the town agreed to provide Fafford with reimbursement of competing developer tie-ins to the sewer line. The Faffords are still waiting for the town to honor this agreement, and in fact, Fafford paid for tie-ins to the sewer line that it installed at its own expense. In addition, the Fafford companies have constructed over two thousand condominium units and over four hundred thousand square feet of commercial and industrial space that benefit the town annually in the millions of dollars. Regardless of how the town acquires the land for the public safety facility, either by working amicably with Mr. Fafford or by eminent domain, hopefully this information clears up any confusion with the residents of the town of Ashland as to the reason why Mr. Fafford has not yet delivered the deed to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Having had a motion made and seconded, the floor is now open for discussion. Okay, we will not have any discussion. This will move to an immediate vote. This will require a two-thirds majority because it involves land taking. All those, and we'll start with a card vote, all those in favor of the article, the motion and the article, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. I declare a two-thirds margin, and that article passes. Articles seven and eight are being withdrawn for consideration at a future town meeting. Article nine, Except Boundary Changes for Four Thirty-three Chestnut, sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to A, purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate, either by appropriation, borrowing, or otherwise, a sum of money to fund said acquisition, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary, of approximately two thousand three hundred and twenty-six square feet of land located along Chestnut Street, indicated as Parcel A, as more fully set forth on the plan on file in the town clerk's office, the acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for general municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. And B, further to thereafter authorize the Select Board to change the use of said parcel for the purpose of transfer or sale, and thereafter to sell or transfer or otherwise dispose of said parcel A as part of the sale of Four Thirty-three Chestnut Street in furtherance of Article seven of the November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen special town meeting, and take any legal action necessary to effectuate said conveyance or transfer, and to further authorize the Select Board to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, including entering into a historic preservation restriction on the property, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to, votes to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, the land described in the article, and authorize the Select Board to change the use of, excuse me, change the use of said parcel for the purpose of transfer or sale, or otherwise dispose of said parcel, and execute any and all documents necessary to enter into historic preservation restriction on the property. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just as background, Four Thirty-three Chestnut Street, which is also known as the Hall House, is a historic home, where in the basement, Henry Warren invented a number of inventions, including, including the start of the electric clock. I'm sure if I'm wrong, Cliff is back there and he'll correct me, probably rather quickly. Through the process, we acquired, we acquired this home and this parcel from Framingham State when they acquired the Warren Conference Center. We acquired it, and we had certain parcel lines that were set out when we acquired it. We went through the process of issuing a request for proposals for a builder or a developer to come in and actually renovate the house. When they looked at that, they felt like the parcel lines were not necessarily beneficial to either Framingham State or the town, and thus the potential owner. So what we entered, what we started to do is enter into negotiations with Framingham State for a land swap. This doesn't entail any entity, meaning Framingham State or the town gaining or losing any property. It simply changes boundary lines and then also eliminates an easement that Framingham State has on the property to the barn. And just for illustration, this is the parcel that's being gained, and this is the piece that is being given to Framingham State by the town.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the Select Board is authorized to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain approximately two thousand three hundred and twenty-six square feet of land located along Chestnut Street, indicated as Parcel A, and more fully set forth on the plan by GD Mark and Associates, dated January twenty-one, twenty twenty, on file in the town clerk's office, the acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for the general municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board, and that no funds be appropriated, as said parcel shall be transferred in exchange for a piece of what is formerly Four Thirty-three Chestnut Street, of which the town has previously authorized disposition. And further, to thereafter authorize the Select Board to change the use of said parcel for the purpose of transfer or sale, and thereafter to sell or transfer or otherwise dispose of said parcel A as part of the sale of Four Thirty-three Chestnut Street in furtherance of Article seven of the November twentieth, twenty nineteen special town meeting, and take any legal action necessary to effectuate said conveyance or transfer, and to further authorize the Select Board to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, including entering into historic preservation restriction on the property, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Discussion? Come on up to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, it's the first time I'm attending a meeting, and I don't know what the protocol is.
What the protocol is, just come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Okay, I'm Clarida Rivera Alsing, Twenty-seven Rasley Lane, Ashland, Massachusetts.
Okay.
All right. So I don't see any number here. I'm an accountant, so I go by the number, and it seems like we're giving you a blanket authority to purchase, acquire, or whatever you want to do with this parcel of land, but where's the number?
I, I would refer you back to the motion, which I just read, which states that no funds be appropriated.
No funds will be appropriated for this?
That's what the motion says, no funds be appropriated. The number you're looking for is zero.
Okay, so if we approve it, that the management of the town will come back to us and say that there is indeed no cost to the town for this particular...
There's no cost to transfer this property.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Because this involves a land acquisition or taking, this will require a two-thirds margin majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you. That passes. I declare a two-thirds on that. Article ten. Land Taking. Accept an easement at Independence Lane to install a boost pump station sponsored by the Select Board. See if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate, either by appropriation, borrowing, or otherwise, a sum of money to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary, an easement for the purpose of installation, construction, and maintenance of a water booster pump station in that parcel of land located at Independence Lane, including the land or a portion thereof, shown as Parcel B on Plan seven sixty-three of nineteen, I'm pa, I'm sorry, Plan seven sixty-three of nineteen ninety-nine, in the Middlesex Registry Deeds, Sheet two of six, and Lot ten on Land Corps Plan two-seven- Sheet two of six, and Lot ten on Land Court Plan two seven zero three nine B, and which is on the file, on file with the town clerk, the acquisition of said easement having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to accept the easement as described in the article. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is another land taking of the variety I talked about earlier, which is more of a negotiated and what we call a friendly taking. This actually stems back to a two thousand and thirteen comprehensive permit for what's known as the Ledges over at Robert Hill Way, which is a sixty-two-plus senior affordable housing development off of Independence Lane. Over the course of the comprehensive permit discussions, it came to light that Independence Lane had been suffering from water pressure issues since the neighborhood had been developed, which I think is nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine. I'm looking at Jim Klepper over here to just nod, if I'm correct here in my facts. Over the course of seven years, you know, that development, Robert Hill Way, it's ebbed and flowed in terms of where it is on the back burner or the front burner. That did move forward, and so we were at the process where we needed to come up with a solution for this booster pump. Initially, the town, what was going to happen was Robert Hill Way was actually going to put a booster pump on their own property, which would further hurt and inhibit the water pressure on Independence Lane. So we started looking at a way that we could put a booster pump on basically the Independence Lane neighborhood property to help service that whole neighborhood as well as Robert Hill Way. As part of that, it came to light that we needed to use a piece of property that was owned by the Homeowners Association on Independence Lane. And unfortunately, the legality of the Homeowners Association had lapsed at the time, so the quickest way to do this was to do a friendly taking of an easement on the property, which will allow EA Fish, who is the developer of Robert Hill Way, to actually build at their own expense a million-dollar booster pump, and then gift that to the town onto the property. So I'm very appreciative of the residents of Independence Lane. They've worked really hard, they've worked really hard with us to try to come up with the solution. And I believe I have a letter of support signed by thirty-nine residents in support of this, and I'm looking forward to getting this resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll enter a motion. Another long one that council requires I read the entire thing. But the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain an easement for the purpose of installation, construction, and maintenance of a water booster pump station in that parcel of land or a portion of the parcel of land located at Independence Lane, including the land or a portion thereof shown as parcel B, on a plan by GLM Engineering and Consulting Services dated August eleventh, nineteen ninety-seven, and recorded as Plan seven sixty-three of nineteen ninety-nine, in the Middlesex Registry of Deeds, Sheet two of six, and Lot ten on Land Court Plan two seven oh three nine B, and which is on file with the town clerk, the acquisition of said easement having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. And further, the Select Board may accept the same as a gift from the owners thereof, and/or pay no consideration thereof, or pass any vote, or take any action relative thereto. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Jim Klepper, thirty-two, Independence Lane in Ashland. I would just ask everybody to consider that generally, I obviously can't speak for everybody, but there is a strong support on Independence Lane for this project. You know, as, as Mr. Herbert stated, the town isn't going to be paying for it. It benefits most of the residents on the street, particularly the ones who live further away from Oak Street. The parcel of land is very small. It is not utilized in any way, shape, or form by the Homeowners Association. In fact, we actually have to pay to, for the upkeep of the land, so it's essentially taking it off our hands, a piece of land that we don't need and don't use. So I would just ask that people vote in favor of the taking.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Meredith Rozoff at sixty-nine Independence Lane, and Jim did a great job of stating everything important to be said, but I just wanted to also, you know, reiterate that most of the neighborhood is absolutely in favor of this. You know, I was one of the people that signed the letter, and we do hope that people will approve.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none, we will move to a vote. As this involves an easement, we will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your blue cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article eleven, amend general laws, general bylaws, stormwater fee lien sponsored by the Stormwater Advisory Committee. See if the town will vote to amend the Town of Ashland General Bylaws, Section twenty-six dash six. Municipal charges liens by a new subparagraph D to Section twenty-six six, twenty-six six C as follows. D, charges, fines, penalties, and/or fees, including interest and all costs, to record said liens in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds for failure to pay stormwater fees. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to amend the Town of Ashland General Bylaws as printed in Article eleven. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to try to explain this one as best as I can. The town has adopted, I think since nineteen ninety-three, the ability to lien properties for unpaid charges, such as water and sewer fees. And recently, I think in two thousand and eighteen, the town passed a stormwater enterprise fund, which also carries with it a fee, I believe, a little less than forty dollars for residential homeowners. Don't know exactly the amount for commercial property owners, but it is based on the impervious surface on their property as well. What happens is if you do not pay your charges, it becomes a lien on your taxes. And that carries with it a lot of negative connotation. I've seen a lot of information spread about people losing their homes, people being foreclosed upon and losing their homes, people racking up significant charges based on a forty-dollar fee. That happens in some places. It doesn't happen here. Since I've been here since two thousand and thirteen, we have maybe taken one property out of tax title. That's the Cadillac paint property. When we brokered a deal with that to actually have the town acquire that, and basically forgave the tax charges associated with it, because the gentleman actually couldn't pay for it. And actually, it was a great win for the town at this point. What's going to happen is if this doesn't pass, stormwater charges get leaned anyway because of the sequence of events. If you do not pay all of your water, sewer, and stormwater bills, basically, it's applied in a certain way, and then to water and then sewer, whatever your oldest account is, and then that anything that is left starts accruing charges. So the next billing cycle that goes around, if you haven't paid your stormwater fee, the payment you made, if you insist on not paying your stormwater fee at that point in time, gets applied to your previous charge. And so you just end up continually getting into arrears. This is a way we hope that people can manage their finances a bit better, not get into these confusing situations where different charges are earning different interest patterns. And it's, you know, I don't want to call it a housekeeping article, because it is monetary. But that's about as good an explanation as I can give on it. I think that's somewhat simplistic, unless the finance director has a better, better way of putting it.
Okay, thank you. To allow discussion, I'll enter a motion. The town vote to amend the bylaw as presented in Article ten of the warrant. Do I have such a motion? Thank you, discussion.
How much is this?
You have to speak into the microphone, and again, your name and address.
Oh, sorry. I thought they already know me. Florida Rivera Alsing, twenty-seven Rassie Lane. So how much is the fee for this?
It is eight, eight dollars and seventy-five cents a quarter.
Paid quarterly is about forty dollars? So that's a hundred and sixty dollars.
He said eight seventy-five a quarter.
I'm sorry?
Eight dollars and seventy-five cents a quarter.
A quarter?
Yes.
So thirty-five dollars a year.
And we're going to lien their property based on eight dollars? How much is, it's going to cost the town to register the lien?
It would register, I believe it's a hundred dollars to register a lien. That's, I'm glad you're bringing up this point, because there's actually a minimum amount that has to accrue before we have a lien. And Brittany, what was, we're actually thinking about changing that amount to what? Currently, it's ten bucks, fifteen bucks?
But to actually lien the fee, we don't charge a fee to lien it. It's only once it goes into tax title, which is a year from then, that we would charge a fee to record it to registry. And that would be the hundred and five dollar charge. To lien it, there'd be no fee. It would only be the twelve percent, I'm sorry, fourteen percent interest per year.
I'm just thinking, you know, the benefit of spending a lot of money on something that is not going to benefit the town at the bottom line of, you know, I don't know, you know? It's just the custom benefit I think we need to consider, you know?
As the town manager's mentioned, there's no cost.
There is no cost. Sorry. Huh? There is no cost to the town. Yeah, but?
For those who couldn't hear, Brittany, there is no, I'm just going to repeat what she said. There is no cost to the town until the lien is recorded in Land Court, and that happens a year?
When it goes into tax title.
When it goes into tax title, which is a year after it's initiated.
Which is a year after.
So there's no cost to the town to do this until it goes to Land Court.
If it, if it gets to that point, I mean, I don't see it really being substantial.
Yeah, because I was just thinking, you know, eight dollars and seventy-five cents. I don't even pay attention to it, because when your bill comes, I just pay it all in full, because I don't want to worry about it. But I was just thinking, eight dollars and seventy-five cents quarterly? You round it up to ten dollars a quarterly. That's forty dollars annually. And after a year, you're going to put a lien, and that's going to, to record the lien on the property, you said it's going to, it's not going to cost the town a penny?
Not to do the lien, no.
No, not to record it.
To do the tax taking, it would cost the town.
I'm sorry?
To do the tax taking, it would cost.
Yeah.
To do the lien, though, which is what we're asking for right now, it would not, it would not cost any money to the town.
Okay, well, anyway, I just thought, that doesn't, to me, you know, it doesn't make sense. You need to keep track of it anyway, in your, in your accounting records, right? Who does not, who does not pay?
Yes.
They're, 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 we're not here to teach people how to handle their finances. You know, if you cannot afford to pay ten dollars a quarter, you know, probably they are in a big, you know, financial situation. And then you, you, you are going to put more burden on the citizens of the town by telling them, you do not pay your ten dollars quarterly. They're going to take your property away from you.
No, sorry.
Okay. You, I know you want to respond to that.
No, no. We do not do this to take people's property away from them. Again, Brittany, how many times have we put properties in tax title?
Tax title's a different story. A few, but we usually collect on tax title. But we have not foreclosed on any property.
Yeah. We haven't, we do not use like a firm, like a talage that we sell, you know, at least since I've been here, or at least since Brittany has been here. It's a way to collect way overdue charges. And again, the stormwater is going to get paid at some point. If you don't pay it your first quarter, if you pay the same amount the second quarter, the first section of your payment is going to be applied to the one that's in arrears. So you're always going to be behind.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a limit of one time at the microphone on each question, unless no one else has any questions.
Hi, I'm Kamashi Ujai Kumar from Seventeen Adams Road, Ashland, and I have a question. Is there a cap for the stormwater bill? Like, we know this year it is forty dollars. Do we know how much it's going to be next year, five years down the line?
We're not going to discuss, that's not, that's not germane to the discussion of how much the stormwater fees are.
Oh, okay, got it. So eight dollars probably this year, so we are basing on it's just eight dollars. It's not actually true. It might change the coming years, is that right?
It can change. It can.
And we don't know yet, because there's no cap on that charge. We don't, when we passed that in two thousand and eighteen, we didn't have a cap for the stormwater charge, right?
No, there was not a cap. The Select Board sets the fees each year.
That's my question, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Did you want to come back? I'll give you a chance to answer another question. Okay. All right. With that, we'll move to a vote. This is a bylaw change that requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion, Article eleven, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. And that passes. Article twelve, construction of the Trolley Brook Trail sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds to allow the construction of the Trolley Brook Trail section of the Ashland Upper Charles Trail, and that to meet this appropriation, a sum of up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Account. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. The Community Preservation Committee met on December first and recommends a vote in favor of Article twelve. Mr. Ring, where art thou?
Michael, you logged in now?
I think I'm good, Marty.
Okay. Thanks for the opportunity to present a little piece of what's called the Ashland Upper Charles Trail. What we're asking for tonight is essentially the transfer of money from the Community Preservation Committee into capital, so that we can build this little portion of the trail, which is about a half a mile long. Can you show the next page, please? In all truthfulness, it's a four hundred and forty thousand dollar project. It comes from a pretty good engineering estimate. It's four hundred thousand dollars from BSC, the same people that are doing other things in town. And since they provided that estimate, we've identified some additional work. So we need about four forty. And we've cobbled together most of that already with various capital funds that are in the town already, and the Mass Trails Grant we received, and a mass legislative earmark. So tonight, we're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but that's the whole project. This shows the concept of the Ashland portion of the Upper Charles Trail. It, the trail itself includes five communities, and a lot of it's built already, none of which is in this town. The portion we're going to ask for this evening is that little piece in the middle, which I'll delineate better in just a moment. But if you, the purpose of putting this in the record is so that you can see that it goes to most of the other places in town that one would want to take a trail to. For instance, the schools and both state parks and downtown. This is aerial of you from Google, kind of trying to tell you where this particular trail is that we're talking about tonight. And I have a better map in a minute, but this is the photograph, and it shows it going from McGonco through the woods over towards the middle school playground, which is along Memorial, also known as the Rail Transit Access Road. This is a more detailed engineering view of the same thing. In the bottom of the figure, there is McGonco Road, kind of in a vertical, and the trail going off to the left, that dashed blue thing off into the woods. And it goes right along the water there, which I forget the name of that. And then it goes, the top image is the rest of the trail going through the woods, and what might be a detail showing where we're going to have to have a little foot bridge over some water. Next, please. And this is conceptually what it might look like at the McGonco end, where we might have And this is conceptually what it might look like at the McGonco end, where we might have a couple of benches people could sit and some nice hedges to separate it from the next-door business. And this is town property that's already under control. So all we're asking for really is this transfer of funding, and I hope you support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. To a loud discussion, I'll enter in a motion that the town vote to appropriate up to $120,000 in Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds to allow the construction of the Trolley Brook Trail section of the Ashland Upper Charles Trail, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $120,000 be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Account with the following stipulations. The Upper Charles Trail Committee shall obtain all required town board and town department permits and approvals prior to the dispersment of any funds. The Upper Charles Trail Committee shall enter into a grant agreement with the Community Preservation Committee prior to dispersment of any funds, and unexpended funds as of December 31, 2022, being returned to their funding sources or pass any vote or taking any action relative thereto, any action thereon. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Mitchell, 5 Newcastle Road. I'd just like to urge town meeting to support this. If you're familiar with the Riverwalk project in town and what a great addition that's been, I think this also has the opportunity to be very similar. And those of you that have been to the Holliston and the Milford sections of the Upper Charles Trail, you'll know what a great addition, what a great asset it is to a community. So I urge everyone to support this article.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul Pohoviac, 40 Lakeview. I just, I just find it hard to believe, $400,000 for a half-mile. I mean, to me, that's a little rich. We're not building a railroad. I, just my own knowledge, I'd like to see how that, how that $435,000 or whatever it is works out. I just think that's pretty high.
So do we have someone who has some knowledge of the components of that cost?
I might not be the only person here that's seen any of this, but I'll speak to it. The estimate comes out to about $370 for paving this piece of road, including a lot of tree work and tree root work. And it's right along some water, which is going to cause a little bit of extra aggravation and protective work. There's a $30,000 contingency built into the 400, and the 40 that we've added recently was stuff that's not quite formalized. It's more ballparky. So that's sort of contingency also, but not entirely, because we do have additional tree work and root mitigation to do that wasn't in the original estimate. If you think you can do it for less, we'd love to have you participate, but really, this meeting is about authorizing the money for it. The bids have not gone out. We don't have, you know, we've got these rough estimates. We don't have contractors lined up yet. So there is opportunity perhaps for saving some money.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Oh, sorry.
I'm Peter Shepherd from 31 Nancy Drive, and it was last year, I was at the farmer's market, and I looked at the plans of the Upper Charles Trail. And I think that's, you know, a new cycle trail. I think this is primarily a cycle trail. It's just the kind of thing that the town needs. So I urge my fellow residents of Ashland to vote in favor of this article.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, this will move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article 12, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. And that passes, but not unanimously. Article 13, Town Forest Enhancement Project sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to $9,700 Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds to allow the Town Forest Committee to complete enhancement of the town forest. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. The Community Preservation Committee met on December 1st and recommends a vote in favor of Article 13. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you. So this is the last article of the night, another CPC article. The Town Forest Committee does a lot of work in town. They do a lot of trail maintenance. They do a lot of trail enhancements, enhancement projects. This $9,700 is to do a number of smaller projects, including installing boundary markers. They actually need to do deer enclosures to keep deer out from basically damaging all the understory, installing additional rain garden plantings, and actually creating a model rain garden as well. So it's another opportunity for the town to help the Town Forest Committee, help, help us.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To a loud discussion, I'll enter in a motion that the town appropriate up to $9,700 in Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds to allow the Town Forest Committee to complete enhancements of the town forest, including installing boundary markers, deer enclosures, and purchase and install additional rain garden plantings to preserve the overall health of the forest and create a model rain garden for the community. And that to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to $9,700 be transferred from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Account with the following stipulations. The Town Forest Committee shall obtain all required town board and town department permits and approvals prior to the dispersment of any funds. The Town Forest Committee shall enter into a grant agreement with the Community Preservation Committee prior to dispersment of any funds, and unexpended funds as of December 31, 2022, being returned to their funding sources or pass any vote or take any action relative, any action thereon. Do I have such a motion? Second, discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 14 is being withdrawn. Just a reminder, at the conclusion, if anyone, please remain in your seats so we can have an orderly dismissal. There be no further business. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. All in favor? You can say aye, that's fine. Meeting adjourned. Okay.